Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order 1.01 for Action 1.02, approve the agenda. Can I get somebody to move that?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes 5-0-0. For those of us in the community this evening, if there is something you are wishing to reach out to the board members about, you can reach us at our email at clerk@fulton.cny ric.org.
Brenda, there was one addition to the agenda, 502.
502?
That was just new from what was on there. We added the 2024-25 calendar, current one, just making the adjustment from the March 10th to the 27th.
Okay.
Date, just want to draw attention to that. It's in your agenda, but I wanted to make sure you saw that, that it was an agenda, because anytime we adjust the calendar, there probably will be another adjustment in the future, but...
It's on your agenda, Brenda.
Do I have a new agenda? Do I have to use this one?
It's 5.03.
So I have to use one that didn't make no time?
I know.
All right. Well, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that basically is the March 10th superintendent's conference day that we switched to February 7th. Kids will be in session on the 10th, we'll be communicating this information, we need to add that to that letter.
All right.
If students are in session on March 10th, as well as the staffs are both aware of that.
All right.
We plan on signing that communication tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
After this board meeting.
Okay. Perfect. In the event of we have to evacuate our building this evening for any emergencies, we can go out the door behind Mr. Hendrickson, go either way. We have a door over here, Mr. Paul Vino's office door, we can go out if we need to. And with that, if you could join me for the pledge allegiance. Yes.
Yes.
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And there was nobody signed up for public forum this evening. So somebody move Action 1.06 to approve January 28th regular meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining?
Abstained.
Passes 4-0-1. Action 1.07, approve the February 4th budget workshop minutes?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes 5-0-0. All right, we have a few meetings coming up this next coming month. We do have our in-person lobby day that is tomorrow, so for those of you who are joining us, we will be carpoolsing with Mr. Superintendent Paul Vino at a very early hour in the morning.
5:30 the bus leaves.
Do you want us to meet here or...
Whatever works best, I mean, we could either meet at the Wegmans on 31, or we can, all right, whatever the preferences of the group, yeah.
You want to meet here?
Doesn't matter to me.
Or I can drive to the Wegmans.
Okay, what time would you like to meet?
So if we meet at, we should meet around 5:30, because I believe the NISBA piece starts at, is it 8 o'clock, the NISBA workshop?
Yes, it is.
So to give us two and a half hours, that'll get us in just about on time.
All right. That'll do it.
Can I have the location of that as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
Perfect, well, thank you for carpoolsing and driving us around.
Ours already full of gas and I cleaned it up, so we're in good shape.
All right, we will be meeting with our State District Assemblymen, Will Barkley, and we will also be meeting with Christopher Ryan, so those are a couple of our important people to reach with, and if any of my colleagues have anything that you would like for us to pass on along, if there's something that you feel is important that we need to share with these gentlemen, please let me know. And are you going tomorrow too? Okay, and we will make sure that we pass that on. We have a couple of regular board meetings coming up, we do also have that budget workshop that is March 4th, health and safety, we also, I wanted to remind you that on March 27th, there is the AI presentation that's with the Central New York School Board Association and the Swigle County School Board Association for the AI, it's with Dr. William Daggett and Ed Finney. I believe Mrs. Perry sent out a calendar invite today, and there is a registration link on there, so if it's something that you're interested in going to, make sure you register. It is free to us, it is in Liverpool, and it should be very interesting, so.
It's not at BOC's?
It's at the BOC's in Liverpool.
Oh, BOC's in Liverpool.
Yep, so we could probably all try to do some carpoolsing if we, you know, want to tip that up, if we got some time to make those arrangements too, so.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Are the music in our schools, I saw them, but I didn't see if they, are those coinciding with our meeting, so we're going to go listen what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I read that.
We're going to be using our auditorium here, Tim.
And I guess this might be a Gene question, but do we have a policy meeting, because I don't remember seeing it.
Yep, I think that there was, I don't see it. Oh, no, there is not.
No, because you know why, Tim, we get it February 5th?
Yep.
And we didn't have one scheduled, because it's during break week.
In March?
In February.
In February, so February, April, no how.
So Tim was asking about a March policy.
Yep, no.
So no March or April?
No April, but yes to March.
Okay, because March isn't on the agenda.
Right, that's what I was pointing out. Thank you, Tim.
I have all the invites you sent us at the beginning of the year, so I'll find it in there.
All right, so Mrs. Perry, you will update us with the date. Okay, thank you so much.
March 19th.
March 19th.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's been March 19th, yep.
Is that the Wednesday?
Yep.
6 o'clock, right?
Yep.
Good, Joel. All right, perfect. Also, on April 2nd, there is the BOC's annual meeting that is held out to City in Mexico. That is something that we will let, well, is there a specific date that we need to let you know? For the City BOC's annual meeting that we normally go to?
No, we'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it, we got some time? All right. That is April 2nd. Oh, yeah, 5:45. Yep. And I just wanted to give a brief update on our superintendent search. It was posted back in January on the 14th. Our application due date is coming up on Friday, the 14th of February. I know that Chris Todd will be do, has started or will be doing forums this week with our stakeholder groups, and hopefully he will have some information to share with us and some interviews for us to start setting up, and we'll be able to move forward with our process, so that is what we're standing right now with the superintendent search.
So will you update us on that, Brenda, or will we wait till the next board meeting to discuss more?
I will definitely keep you updated on that, and I do know that we will be meeting today, maybe.
I think so.
We're supposed to be having an executive session with Superintendent Todd at the end.
Yeah, Chris Todd's going to be here, he plans on being here about 7 o'clock.
So we will be talking a little bit about that later this evening, and then I'll keep you posted after we find out what's going on.
Which stakeholder groups is the meeting, what do we know?
He will, he is set up with community members, he's doing the teacher union groups, a staff or a student group, and he'll also do a parent group, and I'm not sure which days he's doing them on. I know that they've already sent out the invites to the community members for their meeting, I'm not sure what date, didn't specify what date that meeting was, so, thank you. You're very welcome. Any other questions? All right, with that, I think we're going to pass it on over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with some kudos for our kids. We had our athletics this weekend, I don't know if you've heard or not, our girls bowling team, which is always a strong team here in our community, I believe, when I was talking to the coach, I believe it's five times in a row or something, they've done quite well. But on Sunday, I had the privilege of going over to the Flamingo Bowl over in Liverpool, and I spent three wonderful hours watching our kids compete, and they beat Whitesboro by, I believe it was 35 pins, and they became the Section B class champions, our girls. And then, I did not stay, but I got texts the rest of the afternoon, they had a new format in the afternoon, which was, they took the top four teams in Division One, and they had to, this is a special process where each bowler vote only two frames, and they make a team over the 10 frames, however it works. And we beat RFA and Baldwin'sville, so we are the Division One champion as well, so not only were we Section B, we actually beat the A as well, which was great fun, and I was running into a few staff members who are also parents there in a couple of our schools today, and we talked about the experience that we had on Sunday, and our kids really did a terrific job, so hoping, not hoping, we will have our bowlers come, they should be recognized by the board, because, and they don't compete at the state level until March, I think, 14th, and so it's a ways out, but I'm very proud to watch them the other day and compete, and it makes for a long day, I don't know if I could bowl for seven, six, seven hours, but they did that, and so very proud of them, they represented the Fulton City School District very well, so congratulations to that team. There's a lot of other teams rising to occasion over the next couple of weeks, lots of opportunities and sectionals and things coming up, so please watch, the schedule is out there, there's been a lot of changes, I think we got a lot of things going on in the next week and a half. Lots of senior nights tying up, I think Valentine's night's supposed to be with girls, basketball, right, I believe, this week?
Yep.
So there's a lot going on, and as Tim talked about, when we get back after break, we'll be starting Music in Our Schools Month presentations, the musical is well underway and rolling and getting ready, Go Cinderella. I wanted to call out Golden Sun tonight, those that the board may not know, obviously with our fiscal constraints, we were looking at actually trying to remotely send Cinderella into all the sites, we've always brought them over, but it was pretty good expenditure, and we had a discussion, we said, gee, I wonder if we should reach out to Golden Sun. Golden Sun is providing all the transportation to bring our elementary kids and junior high kids over for Cinderella to see, what do they call them, excerpts of the play, era of the musical, and so that's just a great opportunity, so thank you to Golden Sun for doing that, they are an amazing partner, but to provide that gratis, I mean, that's, we're talking thousands of dollars, that would have cost us, and it's not costing anything, so I wanted to make sure, and I thank Patrick and his family for doing that, because his family owns it, so thank you to them, but I wanted to call them out tonight, so, and make sure we are bearing aware. We'll talk a little bit more about the weather in a few minutes when we talk about the calendars, so we're going to move on, we're going to get started this evening with our first item, which is our new course approvals from our GRB educators, Mr. Mainville and Mr. Severs, with a unique proposal around a course that they'd like to provide for our students. Anything from Jeff or Renee, anything you'd add before we turn it over to Mr. Mainville and Mr. Severs?
Sure. These guys were kind of tasked with, everyone, they're looking at what we can do to make school more innovative and looking to have some cross-curricular opportunities for kids, so appreciate that Dan and Brandon were able to look at this and say, how do we connect our two courses, give something that is beneficial to kids and gives more kids access to what we're doing in a way that should make learning a little bit more fun, and try something that's a little bit out of the box, so I won't steal their thunder, I'll let you guys present, but I think, I appreciate their willingness to think a little bit differently than what we've done in the past. Gentlemen?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Dan Mainville, this is Brandon Severs.
Good evening. We've got the plan ironed out, we got the content, we're just trying to figure out how to share the presentation.
That's it. You want to click or you want me to?
Whoa.
So, like Jeff said, we were tasked with, how do we start coming up with more STEM-oriented courses? Now, put this in context, we are moving towards a very electrified society, there's increased electrical infrastructure left and right, everything from solar farms that are putting up, to the need for electricity for EVs and people putting solar panels on their houses. These are also evolving careers. Students have a chance to become electricians, to go out and start installing these on their own, but also, right down to the, I want students to understand their electrical bill, I mean, everything from coming home and understanding what a kilowatt hour is and how that's charging you for running your humidifier, all the way up to having a career in this. So, tonight, what we want to talk is about, why do we want to introduce a new course? How much is it going to cost the district, that's a very important concept? What will students learn, and what makes this different than what we've been doing all right?
So, why a new course? What we're trying to do here is something that I don't believe our district has tried before, is to really change the schedule, rather than just having the standard class and the same teacher for an extended period of time, we'd be switching frequently with the students and kind of keep things fresh, but along with that, the standards for science that Dan would touch upon, and then how those science standards really cross over where technology is, in our current department with everything that we do have now, and the expectations that we can set for the students based out of two completely different subjects. We can set our own standard, because this is something that really hasn't been done before, and we have an elective teacher and a core teacher really coming together to collaborate, to be able to figure out, and this is a lot of things we discussed today, is, you know, at the end of this course, when the kids really want to target where their strengths are, this is an opportunity, if they feel their strengths are suited with Dan, then maybe their capstone project gets set with Dan, and Dan takes on those students under his wing to guide them to completing their capstone for a presentation. If those students are really feeling successful with me and my content portion of this, then those students will grab on with me, and I would guide them getting to their capstone. But the biggest part about it is, it's all going to be creative new ways that our district hasn't seen before. It's going to be something that's going to target completely different employment traits, it's going to allow them to work and see different areas rather than just one subject and the content related from just one teacher, but be able to take all of it and take Dan's experience, his content knowledge, plus take all the content knowledge that I have, and be able to put not just lectures and information coming at them, but be able to put it in real perspective for them to be able to do hands-on projects involved with all this, so it really builds a personal portfolio for them, so when they're looking for these careers in green energy and sustainable systems, we're never going to stop using energy, and our world is keep using more and more of it, why don't we start pointing kids in a direction to get into some of these fields?
Starting in science, you can see in the top left that diagram, it's put well together, but earth science, life science, and the physical science, physics would be in there with chemistry, there's now engineering and technology. STEM has become part of our standards, when I teach cells, when I teach protein synthesis, when I teach ecology, I'm still using the tech standards, they're embedded and weaved into everything that the science classes are doing now. So when I brought this to Brandon and I showed him what some of the ideas I had, it was an instant crossover into the standards that he's using, so we're not just running off on a branch and trying to pick up our own curriculum, it's already state given. This also, as we started putting the curriculum together, it weaves integrally, integrally, loosely with the portrait of a graduate, every piece of that we could find spots for where the students would build strengths. Projected costs, I would argue, are pretty minimal, given that we have a lot of the equipment already in place. All we're looking at are a couple new pieces of measuring equipment, and year-to-year, Brandon will probably speak better to this, just fiber textiles to put these projects together.
One thing I found the biggest success with kids is when you put a project in their hands, it's something that you can either display in the school, something that they can take home, I run into students all the time, they're like, I still have this, I still have that, and it could have been 15 years ago that I had them in class. So being able to create projects, and it's also a portfolio builder for them as well, for them to be able to have tangible functioning things, to be able to demonstrate the content that we're going through, is where the material costs are going to be. I have a lot of connections that has donated and given me many materials over the years, and with a new course like this, it's just an open door to be able to invite in some new companies that really would look at our high school as a forefront, taking on an energy class. We had an energy class about 12 years ago that I taught.
I think you went to.
I think you did. Or Jim. And it was a great class, and I had a fruitful basket of kids from all sorts of different disciplines that I normally might not have seen in some of my other tech classes, so I was getting a huge caller to kids that were completely different students than I usually typically deal with in my tech classes, so that was really nice for me to be able to reach a different population of students at the high school. That course costs significantly more now that we are more set up in our labs and such, to be able to use some basic materials for kids to be able to work with, learn some of the tools and machinery, not going to be a welding content class like some of my other classes, but it's definitely going to be more of teaching kids how to use some basic tools, keep those skills in their toolbox for the future, and be able to create some projects that are very related to a lot of those energy that are related first.
All right, so now let's get to, I mean, we've talked about everything, let's get down to the details. Here's what happened, I go to Brandon and I say, this is what I'm doing for my energy course, do you have any ideas that I have for this little hands-on activity that I was doing during sources and trade-offs? I start with, I have about a marking period and a half unit, you start with the history and principles of energy, started with... and principles of energy, started with, that's what I'm looking for, burning wood, biomass, all the way up through coal, and then we get into the non-renewables, and then we end it with alternatives. So, he started giving me some ideas, he goes, man, I used to teach this energy course at the same time, and we lined it up for those two 10 weeks, so much of it was being taught almost the same way, except I was teaching it through text and through lecture, Brandon was teaching it with hands-on. Why don't we meld these two together and take the best of those both worlds and give it to the students who would do best in each of those classes? So, here's our proposal.
This is where that model looks like, where we take a huge cohort of students that would normally be larger than one class size, split them in half, and rather than changing every marking period or every 20 weeks, every five weeks, we reteach it to a different group of students that we switch. So, in the very beginning, when Dan's teaching the history of energy and where our original energy sources came from, that we're kind of exhausted today, which is why we're looking for new energy resources, and then I'm coming in to look at, where can we create some projects related to maybe some non-renewables? What are some of the early, more primitive things that we can do hands-on wise with those students? And then, at five weeks, we maintain the same gradebook, we switch, now we've got what worked for that five weeks, maybe what we need to groove on and go forward with, and now Dan has his opportunity with a group of students that I had, and then I take his group and we go through that section. And then, five weeks later, we switch back again. Dan's doing the lecture of content, I'm coming in, now it's coming down to how are we utilizing energy and how can we start creating energy in a class? Now, this isn't gonna be a physical process, and we're making solid-state batteries by any means, sorry, Dan, I wish we could.
Down the road.
Down the road. But this is an opportunity for the students to get a fresh face every five weeks, you know? But what we spoke about today quickly was, where some students really strive for the hands-on stuff, but really struggle with some of the lecture classroom type stuff, this is also an opportunity for us to review data, to see where our students are really struggling, and we can now, I can take interventions where maybe kids struggle with Dan's, take some of those things, touch on them with some of the lessons that I'm gonna perform, so I'm reinforcing the work that he's doing up there, and he can do the same with the work that I've done, so it's literally gonna be a constant, non-stop data feed for us to be able to figure out where kids need interventions, where reteaching needs to happen, and where we have to adjust our instruction to be able to meet the needs of all, we're gonna have all sorts of different types of kids in these classes to hit all sorts of different learning styles.
Every different learner, and that's what makes marking period four so exciting, is that, that's gonna be the capstone marking period, this is where the students take what they've learned for the first three quarters, and then it all comes together in the fourth quarter, they get to choose their own projects, and as Brandon said, if you were better in the classroom and you wanna do more research and figure those things out, you come see me. If you do more hands-on, you wanna put something together, you go see Mr. Severs. It's going to really lend itself to those kinds of learners inside that learning situation. Couple ideas that we were throwing around, as I gave this to Brandon, we were going over our finals today, final presentation, he came up with another one. Now, I gotta say, I mean, aside from the project, I talked to Brandon about my ideas, I come, I'm like, what about this? And he starts talking to me about stuff I've never even heard of, or never even thought of, could fit in the class, and I start making these connections, and at that moment, you feel like, this is what the kid's gonna feel, this is exactly what the student's gonna feel like, they're gonna, they already know what they understand about knowledge or electricity or power or whatever it is, but when they start getting it from both sides, all this is gonna start coming together so quickly, I just beat up him, that was great. But, these projects were there, what was the one you were saying about the off-grid?
Well, like a cavern in the woods project, students would figure out how to plan like an off-grid living situation, they'd have to do some research, resourcing to figure out what materials they need to make it work, and then how they would run that site for off-grid living for an determined period of time, and they would put up a proposal together and do some research to figure out how sustainable it was. It's collegiate-level stuff, it's stuff that they're doing at energy classes in college and engineering schools. We can literally modify the curriculum and the expectations to challenge all of our students and leave room for the ability to be able to take some of our learners that are struggling, to be able to take the information and put it in front of them in a language that they understand, and pretty much be able to compromise nothing with the learning outcomes and the level in which they can show growth.
Students will be able to get a full site, you can only get one credit for one year, so seat time is what counts. They can break it up, if there's enough science and technology in it that if a student needed to use it, this class for technology, it can go into tech, if they needed to use it for science, it can go into science. Down the road, if we want to tie into some colleges, we might even be able to make this a dual enrollment course, but we're gonna wanna get ahead of ourselves, there's a lot of possibilities with this course.
Do you have interests, do you have students in mind that, I mean, have, you've shared this with, or they've reached out?
It's tough to roll it out without knowing that it's gonna be in the syllabus, we're confident that it has the potential to be. Few of my students that I have spoke with, even in study halls that aren't even technology students that I see, are like, wow, that's kind of a little mix of both, and that sounds, first thing that I hear, it sounds fun, it sounds fun. Stuff can be super challenging and have it be fun without a struggle, and that's where with two different disciplines of teachers, two different teaching styles, getting to see kids every five weeks, they now have those two different styles coming at them from different directions to be able to understand content, we are very certain that we're gonna be able to reach students at a very higher level and be able to exceed the expectation that maybe a class just taught by one teacher would be able to have an effect on kids, but now coming from two senior teachers, the possibilities are endless with how far we'd be able to push, we may take the first year and be like, we made this too easy. I mean, it's the pilot year, there's gonna be, and I said to Dan earlier, there may be a project you do or a lecture you do that just doesn't fire the kids up. Now, you have five weeks to figure out how to replan that, so the next five weeks come in, and that's where all that data is constantly going back and forth, and then I can be like, Dan, the next five weeks, this is what I changed, the kids ate it up. So, that's where this class really can't fail when it comes to how we're gonna present information to students, because it is coming from two different backgrounds.
This might not be as big of a recruitment problem, because we do have NR Chem, NR Physics, and NR Environment, a couple sections of each the NR Environment, we have three sections right now, so redistributing those students, if we're dropping one of the NR Environment classes to become part of this, it might be not a recruitment problem, but redistribution.
I feel we're gonna have to turn kids away, even in the first year. But I don't wanna turn them away for only our higher achieving students, I wanna have a perfect blended mix, so we can get this out, so all students are aware where this is coming from.
And I would say, on your behalf, if it were like the energy course, which, no, I think if I took it with Mr. Hell, you were in that area, but.
That was my first year.
Yeah, and, but, I was surprised how much diversity was in that class. I worked with kids that I wouldn't, that were not in my like social circles and different things, and we all just kind of found our way, and then we didn't, I think the group project, I'm assuming it's gonna involve some of that, like, it really brought us to think, I remember we did the wind turbines, and then we also went on the trip to go see them and heard, you know, it all linked together.
Banner Wind Farm.
Yes, and just all those pieces, and I think, like you said, Mr. Mainville, if redistribution of some of the students in different places that this, not necessarily replaces, but offers a different way for kids to engage with that conduct, or the, I'm trying to think about curriculum, that's the word, then I think, you know, if we could make this work, I can see a lot of value it provides, especially because even if you are going on to college, I mean, I know I have a, it's my minor or whatever, the concentrations, mine was environmental studies, and I was able to pull a lot from the stuff that I learned into what I was doing, and I know a lot of colleges are focusing on that, so to provide a background, but also the technical thing where kids can, you know, go in and understand the electrical bill, I mean, Reno and Fulton, things just changed with the new meters and everything, having kids going out that understand that at a basic level, I can see a lot of that competency coming into play and being important just in life in general.
Well, what throws a spin on this is, the groups will be separate for the first three quarters, they will have their class, they won't mix, Dan will have his share, I'll have my share, but then all of a sudden, now in that fourth quarter, we could end up with a group of kids where the classes are now completely mixed, and now those kids that have not gotten to share thoughts got to have group work with other kids, now get to take a different group of kids, it's like fourth quarter crunch time, now all of a sudden, it's like September again, and it's a fresh start with a class, because there's a different group of kids all working together now. And this is a class that I see most everything being a collaborative effort between students, very little of this will be singleton work, where the students work primarily by themselves, this will be group effort, and it will be a huge differential in student groups and cohorts and things like that, that will allow kids to work maybe outside their friend circles and things like that, which is always great.
Two huge things really stick out to me with this proposal, and one is taking and taking into consideration where we live and where some of our students go after high school, is huge. So, the kids learning for themselves what careers could happen when you combine both science and technology, especially in the world that we're living in now, is huge, because they now have direction that they're discovering by themselves and together. And also, the whole transitioning piece, like everybody in education knows, like, you need to, you need to transition and transition frequently to keep interest. If the kids are interested, they will learn, they will find a way to learn. And you're networking with the community, you're collaborating and melding all of this together, they're not only gonna discover different careers, but they're gonna discover themselves, because you're going to be working with people you don't normally work with, you might be stepping outside of your comfort zone in Mr. Mainville's class, or you might be stepping outside of your comfort zone in Mr. Severs' class, because you're not used to doing projects, or you're not used to writing papers, but then you discover yourself what you're good at, and you have a direction to continue that, so those are beyond high school.
And it's gonna allow for some choice in the very end.
Yep.
Kids are gonna, obviously, nobody wants to work harder at things that they're weaker at, so the kids are gonna be able to take all their strengths from the course, between the two of us, and put that together as their final capstone project, which is very much centered towards, you know, a hands-on course that would be in an engineering field, science, technology, engineering math, you know, all of those different courses have capstones, even our old project leadway, which is a pre-engineering sequence, other schools still have it, not many, but they had to do a capstone project at the end, and it is diligent work and it requires dedication. If all of a sudden they have a fresh start in that fourth quarter, I see a lot of our students finishing very strongly with this.
And I really feel like giving them the opportunity to choose is, you're going, they're going to find out themselves what they are good at, they're going to find out that they are strong, and they're gonna find their strengths in areas they didn't know that they had before.
I agree.
So, that's, that's the most exciting piece of it, I didn't know I could do that, and I'm actually really good at it.
I'm not sure who to ask, but as far as pathways go, does this fit into a couple of our pathways for graduation in the different areas specifically?
It will, so I think right now, we have, as we look at pathways and seals, this will probably lend itself, as we move forward, to multiple areas where we can connect to some of the seals, civic readiness for sure, getting the points for that, and as, you know, as we do more like with the design, we could fit this in with the arts pathway, and there are multiple opportunities to build this course, I think it lends itself well to looking at different pathways, like right now, getting the idea of getting the Carnegie credits in science or technology, and then maybe eventually looking at doing enrollment, those are all things that lend it, lend itself to being able to do, it's kind of a, a little bit of a, a Swiss Army knife right now, as far as what it can do, and then I think as it evolves, we'll be able to look more as where kids take this too, because I think that's a key, you know, you mentioned that, the kids having a voice in what they do and how they do is gonna be important for this, and that's a big part of Portrait of a Graduate, those seven areas really bring the kids to the center.
What grade level are you looking to target, or grade levels?
Eleven to twelve.
Eleven to twelve.
I had a smirk on my face when you asked that question, Tim, because that's been a big piece of this, that we were thinking, these, the course that we're making is basically the baseline model for what these new portrait classes could be, we were a little overzealous, we thought, maybe let's bring in the Scarborough, because we could also have the side of it where we talked about the public speaking and going out and discussing with the public, this is our project, or going to a business and explaining, we wanna install your solar panels, and this is what we can do, and this is how many kilowatt hours you need, we were also talking about bringing in financial math, so that students could get, understand maybe the basics of a math model on owning your own business and building your own business and producing your own, I mean, there's so many combinations, we were talking about doing geometry and welding, why aren't those classes put together? So, as soon as we put these, this little one together, this is gonna be our baseline to start with, this'll be the lowest expectation we ever have, so, and to get, going forward, not right now, like, this is gonna be big, but this is gonna be the lowest bar we're gonna set for it.
And I think, you know, as a staff member, looking at and just seeing and hearing about student engagement and their interest in it, every teacher wants to sit in front of a classroom of students, where all of them are interested and engaged and wanna keep working on what you're teaching. This is an opportunity to be able to change it up quickly, I think the pilot of this can be very successful, and then open the door to all sorts of department heads and staff getting together, all the way down to the elementary levels, to figure out how they can cross this, to figure out, we went down to the elementaries last year and did a STEAM project, light up your neighborhood with the elementaries, just to go down there and see those little kids staring at us and just waiting, like sponges ready to just soak into them, it was so much fun, it was an unbelievable opportunity, and it was really a great opportunity for us to work with the elementary teachers, because they were looking for that piece to fit into that final state test, so that they could help explain to those kids how to prepare for it, and we got great feedback from everybody that we worked with, and it was a huge collaborative effort, they got thrown together so fast, and other than us hustling to get everything ready, it went off pretty well, and we had every person I talked to, we pulled Dan in on that, because we have four elementaries and three tech teachers, so, and who knows what grade we ended up with. So, that was great to get that in, but I don't know if that's what sparked all of this in mine and Dan's conversations, but it worked, and we're here now, and we're asking admin and board to really look at this as an amazing opportunity for our students, not just next year, but to build our district into something that will be now a staple in their state.
Yeah, I'd like to add that, I think that I'm really excited about the fact that we have students that would be collaborating together that possibly wouldn't ever collaborate, you know, previously, given their interest, you know, not only that, but we have staff, you know, that are collaborating, and then the potential for that in other areas, like you mentioned math and things like that, but I think it also leaves a great potential with our district and our students to collaborate with like local renewable energy companies, and even give students opportunities to explore careers, whether it's the wind farm, or the solar panels, or book field, or something that they'd never even experienced or considered before, I think this could be really incredible class too, and I'd love to see where it goes.
Contacts have already been made, people are waiting.
This could be the spark.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I just, thank you for your efforts on behalf, I think, you know, what you're gonna see over the next three to five years, when we get more guidance with respect to the portfolio of a graduate and all, and I said, guidance is coming out, this is what the guidance is gonna look like, this is what they want kids to do, they want kids to have a portfolio of projects and, you know, which culminate in all of the, their, the reading requirements, but you're not gonna see Regent's exams as consistent, you're gonna see these capstone projects that are multidisciplinary, more importantly, where teams of kids are coming together to demonstrate problem solving and the ability to work together, and I think that, that what we're seeing, what the state's wanting us to do is exactly what you saw here, and you're seeing it starting in our middle, you've seen a presentation of our capstone projects going on in Seal Civic Ready in the eighth grade, and it's kind of evolving both directions, this is another example of what you're gonna start to see, so, thank you for being the pioneers, and I look forward to reading about and maybe seeing you coming and seeing presentations in the, in the future as well.
I do.
Absolutely, yeah, any, any project that any kid really makes that points out renewable resource opportunities, that is the definition of what Civic Writing is, so, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item this evening is our budget update, Mrs. Cooper, if you wanna talk about our... Mrs. Cooper, if you want to talk about our.
Once again, I'm following a really exciting presentation, a budget update.
Because the budget's going to drag me out.
We should do budget first, yeah. No, that's okay, I don't mind. So much of the update is based on our conversations from the budget workshop and some questions that came up. We did send ahead the information that sort of summarizes our grant funding and how that's used. So if you have any questions, once you've digested that or if it didn't make sense, please let me know and I'm happy to talk about that further.
Just quick question, Kate, because I was muddled it up in my head. The, when we break it into the three big categories for like where the expense is coming from. Does that factor grant and other money from other sources or is grants separate out of those three spots?
The grants are separate, so that's its own account. We're talking, when we're talking about next year's budget and our projections, that's the general fund. The grants are actually the special aid fund, so it's its own separate entity, kind of. When I'm projecting though, I do assume some grant money, especially for salaries. To help close the gap that exists in the general fund because that is where we use a lot of our our special aid money is in salaries. But you don't necessarily see it in the general fund, I guess.
That's just what I wanted to tell you, that's what I thought.
I'm sorry, that's not a very clear answer.
I was worried I was thinking of it wrong, but that's how I have it in my head.
Yes, you're right. The first slides are, I've been trying to get in the habit of including our vision, our mission, our values, the dragon way as well. Because with anything, including the budget, I think it's important to keep all of our, these important portions of our beliefs in mind. Then I did include a slide that walks through the tax cap calculation, just to give everybody an idea of how we get there. It is an Excel sheet, so it does do the math for me. And then eventually what you do is you have to go onto the state comptroller's website and put your numbers in there. So it sort of serves as a check. So you hope to get that tax levy threshold at the bottom, the twenty-three million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred twenty. You want that to match up to the number that comes out on the comptroller's website, which it does. So I'm confident that we're accurate here. But as you can see, you kind of start with last, or when you're thinking of next year, it's last year, but the current year's information, so twenty-four, twenty-five, you start with our tax levy. Then there there are some things that you have to include that are are numbers that you get from the comptroller. So it's out of our control, the tax base growth factor. So that's from the comptroller and that's anything that's been added to our tax base that wasn't present before. And that number is one point zero zero seven seven. So that's a a quick multiplication you do. Then you add your pilots from twenty-four, twenty-five and you can see that number is three hundred eleven thousand, three thirty-three and you get a total. Then you subtract any prior year exemptions, we don't have any torts or judgments. The tax surciaries that we experience, those don't count in the torts and judgments, so that's why that's zero. And then the local capital levy share is an important number that really, that's why we figure out our capital exclusions. Because that helps us determine what the the local share of the capital cost is. And you can see in twenty-four, twenty-five, it was five hundred sixty thousand, eight thirty-five. You're going to see a pattern here when we're talking about debts and building aid decreasing. You're going to see that the local share is also decreasing, which has an effect, it all has an effect on the tax cap.
What's a pilot?
The pilots are the payments in lieu of taxes. So if a organization comes to an agreement, it's with the IDA.
Industrial Development.
Yes, thank you. I knew you would know the acronym right off the top of your head and quickly, it would take me a couple of minutes. That they can, they can pay this certain amount rather than what it would cost them if they were on the tax rolls. And it's usually for several years, so it's a lump sum that they agree to pay for.
Okay.
Multiple years. We have, you know, a few, you see the three hundred eleven thousand there, you know, other districts, especially the ones that are near like the nuclear plants. Have more large numbers, pilots. And I think that's a fairly low number for us, but. So then you get into the allowable levy growth factor, the lesser of two percent of CPI from the comptroller. And usually it's two percent and that's what it is this year. Subtract your pilots that you anticipate for twenty-five, twenty-six. So I anticipate about two hundred ninety-four thousand because we do have one falling off. That doesn't mean we won't end up with more because that's what happened this year. I wasn't anticipating three hundred and eleven thousand, but a couple were added. Available carryover, we don't have any, that is an equation that is the comptroller's website does for you. That you would have carryover, like if you had done a a zero percent increase the prior year maybe, which we didn't do that, so we don't have any carryover. And then that gives you your tax limit before exclusions. And then the, you see the torts and judgments, we don't have an exemption for ERS, which is employee retirement or TRS, which is teacher retirement. Nobody gets those this year, there just aren't any. And then the capital exclusions for, I'm sorry, that should say twenty-five, twenty-six. Get us to a local share of four hundred four thousand, nine hundred sixty, which is a little bit lower than it was in the current year. And that's where, doing all of that math, we get to the tax levy threshold of twenty-three million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred twenty. Which represents a tax cap of two point one five percent. Which I mentioned last time when we talked, but I wanted to show you, for anybody interested, all of the steps of how we get there.
So what does that mean?
So what that means is the most that we can increase taxes is two point one five percent. Or the allowable increase in dollars right above that is four hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-six.
Without a super majority.
Without a super majority, yes. So then, you know, we had talked at the budget workshop that it's nice to see some options. What would it look like with a one percent increase, a one and a half percent increase? First, what would it look like to the budget and then what would it look like per household? So the next few slides outline that a bit for everyone. So I'll let you sort of digest this slide. As you can see, it goes from having no increase in taxes all the way up to the cap. And you can see how that affects our deficit as you increase taxes. From no increase to one percent, one point five percent, two percent, and then the cap, which is two point one five percent. So maximum it can take us from a little over a six million dollar deficit to closer to a five point six million dollar deficit. So again, that that maximum dollar amount, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-six is is the gap that we could fill if we went to the to the cap. Any questions so far?
No.
So then I know last year Dom had put together some slides that show the effect that a tax increase will have on a household. And, you know, just the disclaimer that it's an estimate. You're using tax rates from the current year because we won't have next year's tax rates until the summer. So we can only estimate based on the information we have and some of that information is out of our control, we don't set the rates. So, you know, just knowing that it's an estimate when you're looking at it. So starting with the cap, so the two point one five percent increase. With homes at assessed values of one hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. And this is after considering the basic star exemption, not the enhanced, just the basic. This is the effect you would see per year and then per month. And obviously as the assessment goes up, the the amount of money that you'll see increase as well.
Can you tell me the three, the one hundred, two hundred, two hundred?
Yep, so for one hundred thousand, and this is the cap at two point one five percent. The per year for one hundred thousand would be thirty-nine dollars, thirteen cents. Two hundred thousand would be ninety-five dollars and three cents. And three hundred thousand would be a hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-three cents per year. Then the next slide, I went down to the estimated impact of a two percent increase. So for a home assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, it would be a thirty-six, thirty-six dollars and forty cents. Two hundred thousand, eighty-eight dollars and forty cents, three hundred thousand, a hundred and forty dollars and forty cents. One and a half percent, a hundred thousand dollar house would see a twenty-seven dollar, thirty cent increase per year. Two hundred thousand dollar house, sixty-six dollars and thirty cents. And three hundred thousand dollar house, a hundred and five dollars and thirty cents. And then finally, a one percent increase, a hundred thousand dollar house would see eighteen dollars and twenty cents per year increase. Two hundred thousand dollar house, forty-four dollars and twenty cents. Three hundred thousand dollar house, seventy dollars and twenty cents. Again, estimates, you know, last year assessments changed, again, we didn't have any control over that unfortunately. And and there are just certain things that the district doesn't control. So we can only provide an estimate to people on what we think could be the impact based on the information we have. Questions on those? If it helps, I could turn this into a handout and send it as well, so you can kind of look at them close together and see the the differences.
Thank you for preparing that.
No problem. And those are the slides I have for this meeting, certainly we'll keep adding to it as more information comes in.
So this was right off the questions you asked at our budget workshop. So that's how we'd realize, anytime you have a question, we can turn these around quickly and be able to do this. So this was a great, this is a slide we normally look at probably two to three meetings from now. But the conversation that we had led to, made it very appropriate to have it at this conversation. So it was driven by your questions. So just like we said at our last budget meeting, if you do have questions that are popping up or you're like, what about this? Make sure we get those and we can then come up with a response for the next meeting afterwards. We're building our portfolio, if you will, of information. I I would imagine we're going to draw upon this slide a number of times over the next couple of months.
We also, I think I mentioned this, but just as a reminder, we're meeting with our auditor this week. And one of the topics will be our reserves, so hopefully I can share some more information on reserves and possible uses the next time we talk as well.
I guess I have one quick question.
Sure.
Would you be able, if you're going to send this one or if we're going to talk about it more in the next meeting? Get us what the, because we did the two point nine nine last year. Can you get us what that equated to as an increase to the household? So I can kind of see like, okay, if we did that, then we did first, now I can look at and say, well, two point one five is an increase of this much. That's a combined increase of this over two years.
Yep, not a problem.
All right, thank you.
So more followed our next meeting, just in a couple of weeks, we'll also have some responses, if anything we've heard at the state level.
Yes.
Been sitting on webinars, I've been forwarding anything from NISP, NISCUS too. I said it on the NISCUS budget one today, Kate did as well. Just taking in not a lot of new information, a lot of discussion around the two percent issues that are safe harmless for a lot of districts. Which really isn't applicable to us here in Fulton. But I'm sure we'll learn some things tomorrow and gather some information and we'll share as well. So again, thank you for your questions at the last meet. And then as you ask them, like Tim's precious night, it's a great one to provide a comparison of where we're at now compared to, so you'd be able to do that as well. And we can also provide the ten lens, or the ten-year lens that we've also, so you can really get an idea of a ten-year lens that we produce every year. But it kind of fits in with this as well, so. Thank you, if there's any other questions, we'll move forward. The next item on this evening's agenda was the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. So we're making an adjustment on the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. As you know, we swapped March tenth and February seventh. We did that in anticipation of some inclement weather last week. And so students will be coming in for a full day, so actually kids are gaining a full half a day of of instruction that day and a full day. And so we're going to make that adjustment on this calendar, just so it gets us up to date. So that what that does is it leaves us, and I'll provide more information at our next board meeting, because the team's still kind of processing through. You know, in my nine years here, I think, I think, don't think we ever had less than one left. I don't remember ever having none. And, you know, I always had my emergency one at the end of the year, which is what that would be. So right now, to this point, we've used all five emergency closure days in twenty-four, twenty-five. Any additional, so what would happen is the next one, we have a day on June twenty-seventh that you see in the calendar. That right now is yellow and it's called last day superintendent's conference day. I purposely leave one of our four superintendent's conferences always on the last day because you worry that you may have something comes up at the end of the year. This allows you that flexibility. This year, what we would do is on our next, let's say, if we have one, this is a big if, because I really don't want anymore. I'm kind of tired of getting up and looking at the weather. But I'm out there with a lot of good friends out there every morning that are out looking at this, so. The next closure would be, let's say if if we had a closure this Friday, we would do a virtual superintendent's conference day. And that would be, that basically would take that June twenty-seventh and we would have students on June twenty-seventh then. So normally we haven't had kids in, so we'd have to switch that to get that day. That'll allow us and which would lead to our next piece is that we're looking at further, any further days beyond that being remote learning days. So on this next full day, one of the things that would be is the whole day would focus on what would, what would remote learning look like? What would need to happen for kids? What would that experience look like? I think all of us know that we learned a lot from remote learning before. There are some positives, it gives you some flexibility. It's also challenging for some kids, you know, and, you know, we look at access, we've talked to our team at least to this point. And they're saying, obviously, we still have, we have access to Chromebooks, you know, for all of our kids. It would entail our kids taking them back and forth. It would entail, especially I worried our littles and making sure that the plan for the littles, and what I mean by that is pre-K to second graders. Predominantly, making sure that the plan for access and opportunity is there. And I know a number of districts are exploring this opportunity and as we are as well. Obviously, in our calendar, there's a plan every year that's at the bottom of the calendar. You can see we're obviously too close to February break to start really looking at days. I had seen some things when I first got here, it's really, if you don't know two weeks ahead of the break, you kind of don't go with that break and start looking at the next one. So right now, we do have a full April break if we needed to do something. But right now, we're exploring the and getting in place the the remote learning plan. We have obviously all the things that we learned for before, we have the opportunities to provide it one-on-one. But again, it's a changing in the way you do things and we want to make sure we do it correctly. As you know, here in Fulton, we like to get it right and we tend to go, you know, really do it pretty comprehensively. So that's where I don't know if my team, is there anything you would add to what I've shared so far, have I hit each of the bullets? We plan on communicating tomorrow to provide an update to our staff, our families tomorrow. So there'll be a communication going out, talking about if we have another day coming up, what the anticipated plan is down the road. I received some good questions tonight that obviously I want to take back and get confirmation about just capacity and things like that as well. So and I'm watching very closely and we're sharing with other districts kind of what's going on. I've been in conversation with one of the districts that actually did a day last week because they have a school that it actually was over on days already. So we're learning a bit, we're really trying to learn from one another so that we replicate the good things and we take on the challenges that are out there. So that's that's where we're at right now and obviously we'll provide a very comprehensive plan at the next and we'll share the communications with you tomorrow as well.
Have we looked at the the early release date for March twenty-first as an option?
Yeah, the problem is it already counts as as a day, it's already in the calendar, so even if, so if we've lost it, that would be a bad thing. So it's already counting, it's kind of like, I I, on the June twenty-seventh, it was already a superintendent's conference day. So it saves us the hundred and seventy-six student day. So that's why we put students in on that day. And then it allows us the flexibility of my one conference day to take a day where we lose because I have a conference day in reserve, you know, that would be the reserve. So that's where that one comes from.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, because the goal, the goal is not, it's not a goal, it's a, we have to have one hundred and seventy-six student days. Doesn't say how many conferences, you have to have a hundred and seventy, you have to have a hundred and eighty days total in your package. Generally, it's a one seventy-six plus four, but in this case. Generally, it's a one seventy-six plus four, but in this case, we would be, you know, we would be okay with that because we have the fourth. That's what's giving us the one eighty. So we're, we would be down to the one eighty immediately with one day more. So, you know, my fingers are crossed because this Thursday, there's a ice predicted, but I like one forecast that says it's gonna be warmer by, in the morning, so we're okay. And then I didn't like the rest of that forecast, which is talking about lake effect, which wasn't there on Friday, when I looked earlier this morning. So again, we're going day to day. We're doing the best we can based on what we have in place. And I think shifting to remote learning sounds like such a simple thing, but it's a very big challenge for, for kids and staff. We have a lot of staff that never experienced that as well. When you think about the turnover and things like that. So again, we want to do it right and we want it to be a meaningful, purposeful experience as well.
So I just want to pass out some concerns that I have. It's just like we do, June twenty-seventh, if, let's say, if it was in person, gives me pause because it gets so hot. So even in person makes me a little nervous to continue that day. Virtually, just we have so many barriers, you know, we have internet access, we have costs, we have the Chromebooks that haven't been going back and forth. We have charging cords because our, all of them go on the charging stations and how are we gonna get the kids their Chromebooks? And then if we do a virtual day on June twenty-seventh, then the students have those Chromebooks all summer. Or we'll, we have to figure out another staff day to get those back in. There just seems to be a lot of.
I'm hoping we're not doing a virtual day on June twenty-seventh.
Oh, I thought you said virtual.
No, 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 no. Kids in session, in person, in person.
So then we still have the heat index thing and then the new, I don't know.
Right, I'd like to just, I'll touch base on the heat. Just because you bring it up, and I think it's something, last year, when we polled our schools, we actually had a maximum of five to six classrooms in any of our elementary that weren't air conditioned because of the air condi, so. And we had the ability, we actually could use our libraries, which are air conditioned, and actually make that work. We're good, we're good there. Our junior high is actually air conditioned. For all the challenges we've had with that building, it actually has air conditioning in it. So we really, and I, again, I don't want to jinx myself, because we use a lot of room air conditioners in this district. A lot of districts in our, in our, in our region do not have as many of those. But we actually polled all of the schools last year. Yes, we did a shutdown and we went to half days last year. You know, looking back at the data, we could have gotten away and moved kids around in those buildings. And obviously, looked at that data that we already collected and said, you know, we could have made those days work because we pulled temperatures in all of those rooms. They average somewhere between seventy-three and seventy-five degrees in the rooms with the, with the room air conditioners. And so we could work with that and work with spaces that we have in the building to make that happen. So obviously, not, not ideal, but I think in a better situation than most. Ideally, down the road, I hope that this district someday, if we get our debt limit up and we have the funds, to be able to do that. Obviously, I think a conversion to air conditioner, more air conditioning opportunities. Any of the air vents and air handlers that we've been putting in have the capacity to be shifted to air conditioning. So we've already put in the way, the infrastructure so that if the district ever wanted to put the cooling coils in, it's already set up. Those are set up for that type of work. So like the high school is all set up for that.
So, so the community might ask, because they have heard on the news that the governor would say the district would have to shut down if they're eighty-eight degrees or above. Have we had any updates from how that looks?
No, we haven't received any.
That would be your concern.
Yeah, no, but the bottom line is if our, it's the room temperature. There's certain ways you take the temperature in the classrooms. We, and, and our temperature checks last year put us at seventy-five and whatever the math would be, probably close to eighty to eighty-five percent of the rooms. Based on that data with the room air conditions, again, we were monitoring those. Is it the coolest thing in the world? No. Was it exceeding the eighty-eight? No.
And I brought up a lot of the same questions, Valen, because it comes down to accessibility, you know, a lot of different pieces that go into this. And I think, you know, if this is where we're at, because this is the information we have, and we're gonna have a little more about other districts, I think that's okay. But I think we as a board need to make sure we're holding accountable that, you know, we're, if this is what we're doing and we have work-throughs that, that we're getting ahead of it and making those work-throughs. So if we're gonna have to be there, it's not, okay, what are we gonna do? It's okay, we're implementing Plan B, because this is what's gonna work. And I think if we can do that, we can succeed with this model. I just think, again, we gotta be on top of it.
I agree with you, Tim. And I think, not, it didn't sneak up on us, but I think we, we have things in place. And I, again, it's all the things you both brought up this evening are things that we've been thinking about. And I think that we want to make sure, we learned a lot from four or five years ago, what went on. And we're trying to, to make sure we take the best of those things and do that. The good news is, you know, obviously, we've been a one-to-one district for a while. The question is just, we have to get back into the routine of providing the instruction that way. They're being used in most of the classrooms every day. But it's just a question of logging on for getting into that routine. And I agree with you, it's easier when you're going, gosh, I hope we never do it again, weeks at a time versus a day here and a day there.
Right, and I, and I understand that point and I think as, you know, I, I totally understand, but then I'm thinking of like, back when we did it, a lot of parents were virtual or we had those supports in place for those things. I mean, there's just such a dramatic cost to me. I guess my feeling is, we already have a contingency plan. You know, this Thursday is supposed to be, you know, pretty bad with snow and ice and thing. I'm just wondering, should we just continue our plan for April break instead of doing all this and adding a cost and worry and extra time off for our parents?
Were the virtuals, they're gonna cost us?
I'm not sure what they had the costs are. You think, all right, we're not purchasing any new computers, we're not purchasing any.
So families who don't have internet access, we would have to figure out hotspots.
So we had a handful of the, I, I, hotspots, there you go, there's the word. We do have a handful of those still. You know, I think that's something that we would need obviously to explore. We also, you know, we could do some other, explore some other kinds of things. I think the April break, we could always fall back on. I think what we run into with that is, I think you're still gonna have attendance issues. We're still gonna, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of issues that are associated with that as well. I have heard that, you know, here in our district about, well before my time, I want to say somewhere in the window of the two thousands, we actually were done early January, you indicated, we were well into our five. And it was early enough where February break was, it needed to be addressed. So right now, we have four days at April break that obviously could be falling. If we feel that this wasn't working for kids and for staff, then obviously, we could pivot if we needed to look at that. And we would work with our bargaining units to do that. So, but right now, I think that, you know, our plan is to develop this plan, flush it out further, and then move forward. We have the one day in our pocket. Hopefully, Mother Nature cooperates at least with one day this week. That would be helpful. I'd like to see both. And then that would allow us to, to make sure that we're doing the best we can for our kids. This isn't ideal for anybody. The best is, is we know what the best is. We have amazing staff, amazing teachers that need to be in front of kids in person. Unfortunately, with the way the schedule, you know, with the weather has been, we haven't been able to provide that opportunity. But I think there's some real positives that can happen with remote learning too, if we do it well. And I think before, we did a lot of things very well. And I would, you know, I, I think as a district, we did some things better than others. And I think there's other areas where we learned from others. And so I think we've got to, we'll take that into consideration. Is there anything else from my team or anyone here?
We're only talking about maybe one day though, right?
I would love just one more day.
No, but I'm just, but, I mean, worst case scenario, what are we talking, like three days from now?
Like one day at a time.
One day at a time. So it's not like we're building another curriculum. It's not any of that. But I, I think the biggest worry would be junior high and high school kids are used to bringing their Chromebooks home every single day. And they, and.
Junior high does not anymore.
Nine to twelve does. Seven, eight has been doing more school-based.
What about the elementary school? Do they have access to Chromebooks at all?
They have access, yes, we have access for all of our kids. They have not been taking them back and forth.
But we can get that back. Right, and if we, if we're forecasting like a need, put this in your backpack and go home with it. It's like, you know what I mean? It's a day.
Part of the ladder that we're working on is, is getting our, our staff ready to get their kids ready. Practicing, here's how you sign on, here's, because we know from COVID, that was an issue for a while, to get our kids on and get them engaged and figure out all those. We could, we have some time to practice. That's why we, we're gonna, you know, get the letter out. Some people have some time to, to get their kids ready, to talk about, here's what you need to do, here's what needs to happen. As we get the letter out to, to parents, same thing. When your kids bring home the Chromebook for the first time, sign on to your Wi-Fi, make sure that it works, make sure that things connect and that if we have a day, you're ready for it. Those kind of things, getting people ready, because the difference between now and then is, it's not gonna be consecutive. It's gonna be intermittent, right? It's gonna be a day here that we didn't expect or a day there. So getting some simple plans that allow our kids to be successful in practice and do some work is gonna.
And maybe even at the elementary level, if you don't, if you're having trouble signing on or whatever, then just make a blast. Like, write me a paragraph about what you did today. You know what I mean? There has to be something else that they can do.
So we've been planning about what instruction will look like at home.
Right.
Because, and the other thing to consider is when the contingency plan was made on the calendar was before remote learning. So it was never in the conversation. Maybe we need to update the calendar to include it, because most districts have a remote learning plan and so do we. And my, my fear with April break is it would be disruptive to family vacations and staff vacations, and we wouldn't be able to staff buildings appropriately. And so this is an alternative, and like you said, Jen, if we're looking at one, maybe two days, it, it might be a lot more efficient than having to fall back on that break, in our opinion.
More attendance too, I'm sure.
Maybe someday, maybe someday I'll do a weather presentation for y'all before I leave, right? To actually see a skill that I have developed over the years. But I think, I don't think people realize the amount of time and effort that goes into this in the days preceding, the morning of. We really try every which way to, to make sure that, can we get our kids in safely and our staff in safely? And if we can't, that's when we call that day. It's frustrating when we're told things are coming in ice, things like that. So, but I think that that's, you know, and I, I understand the April P. Any plan is a challenge that, that we're looking at here, unfortunately. But I think what we're going to do is give the best comprehensive opportunities for our kids. The other thing we'll do is every time we do a remote learning, if we have to go down that path, we will do a survey the same day to the parents, asking, how was this experience? I was talking to a superintendent in this county and the other day, and after they did it in their district last week. And his survey was, I liked his questions, I liked what he did in the feedback he shared with me that he got from his parents and staff, was very helpful and as we're looking at, at what we're doing. But it was interesting. He had a ninety-one percent attendance. Nobody saw that. He said, that's actually better than our daily attendance. So, I mean, it was an interesting piece to hear. And so I think, again, it's, it's all in the rollout and making sure that we relieve, release, make it as a positive experience as possible and people have the right information, and that's what we want to do.
So in your communication that goes out, parents would be able to reach out to their building principal or, you know, your team to say, hey, we don't have access to an email.
We should make sure that's in the letter.
Or to a Wi-Fi.
We talked about sending a survey out.
To Wi-Fi, yes.
The survey goes with the letter, so that's completed.
We're talking about contingencies, like you said, Jen, too, like if, if we need to. Because one of the things is to get onto Google Classrooms, they have to be associated with the kids, with the students. If there were issues with that, can we set up like office hours for the, for the staff, for parents to be able to call in or check in with them as well? If, if there are issues with things, that way, that day of, they can call in for the office hours and say, my, my kid's struggling with this, can you help me out? And then the teachers are available to help out. So it's not such a rigid structured day either.
I was gonna say, the alternate schedules, we're not looking at six straight hours of instruction, a little bit of asynchronous, a little bit of, you know, meeting, a little bit of direct instruction, and then the office hours are, so they're valid.
It's like a regular school day, right? Something too to take into consideration, because this is me, is I look out the window and I'm like, what do you mean? Like, what, why aren't we going in now? Right? And I'm like, what, what's happening? And I don't, a lot of people, I don't think, take into consideration the later start of the elementary school. And that's usually, that, and, I mean, the last couple of times, I feel like that was the deciding factor is the later pickup time. Because of course, you, you know, you're thinking about yourself and you're thinking about your kids, but that later start time and that's, that's a huge thing that probably went into, you know, deciding, but even I didn't think about that.
This year, more than any other year though, the north side of Fulton, the south side of Fulton are so different.
Yep.
You probably got twelve inches of snow yesterday. I got twenty-four or thirty inches of snow yesterday. And that, I mean, we're both, and, and you go another ten miles past, and there was nothing. It's crazy.
Well, with the exception of yesterday, the timing is really about the challenge, because the timing of the predicted timing has really driven the need to delay, or in this case.
And we've been talking to meteorologists and their software has been off. They're like, well, this one's struggling with the P. I said, you think? You know, like the night we got the foot of snow, nobody saw that coming, neither did I. You know, and I think it's been a challenge. I think as a, as a region, we have not seen this amount of snow in a number of years. So I think that's a piece of this. But again, it's part of, we're, we're in upstate New York, we're in Oswego, and we persevere. And we're gonna provide the greatest opportunities for kids.
So, so then it's a good idea that Mr. Connie had, that when you're looking at your draft, that maybe you're reevaluating.
I think it may be something to realize, because this is, this is, has worked for us for decades. And now it's, it needs to be looked at. And I think one of the things, if anything, we make sure that we're building capacity throughout the course of the year for kids and figuring out ways to, to test throughout the year, the things that can work. So. If there's any other questions on twenty-four, twenty-five, obviously, next Tuesday, we're gonna look at another change. If you have to cancel, because right now, it does not reflect a change on June twenty-seventh.
Right. One more question, I'm sorry. I just, one more question. Is there a way, like we talked about like asynchronous hours or checking in and things like that. Is there a way if students didn't have their Chromebook at home, but they have laptops, is there a way to?
They log in. They can log in with their. Not sign on, what did you, gosh, Brian, you're really something. You go login just to Google Classroom from your own device using their, their email.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So we want to make sure we're communicating with our parents as well.
So maybe if we're able, so I didn't know that, just so we're aware. I thought you had.
That's our letter.
I thought you had to be on a school-issued Google Chromebook. So if we can maybe get that information out, then it could be any person. But I know with my own kid, he's said something about.
So as a parent, you couldn't log in, but your son could log in using his information from the school.
Fantastic to know. See, I didn't learn something new today.
Right.
So that, that actually adds, has to be that.
Right, it's much, much better.
You got a lot of, add that letter, Mr. Anderson.
How are we gonna get the Chromebooks home? And then they've got charging cords and everything else. It was my thought process.
Mrs. Henderson.
Mrs. Henderson. All right, and then for your viewing pleasure, not on a vote for tonight, I can't, we were already talking about the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. And what you have here is a calendar that we have reviewed with the teachers bargaining unit, which is a part of the process that we do here in Fulton. It starts after Labor Day, which was a positive for everybody. That's always one of the things we like to see. There is a staff orientation day on the second, which is, in this district, as you know, we're a one eighty-five plus one. So there's an orientation day plus four conference days in, in school. So on the first day, it's orientation day. On the third, it's a staff superintendent's conference day. And on the fourth, the kids start. If you work your way through, there's Columbus Day in October. Thirty-first will be a half a day on, or early release for pre-K twelve. That actually would be a, a work afternoon for staff, really focusing on, that's right toward the end of the first marking period. So a great way to look at all the data on the kids reset for the second marking period. And then November tenth is a superintendent's conference day. The eleventh is Veterans Day. And then the way this fell out, we have, normally, we do the conference days on the twentieth and twenty-first. However, that really breaks up the week when you look at the, you'd have a full week and then you'd have a broken week. You had a broken week and then a broken week anyway. So what we've got now is a full week. We've got Veterans Day week, which is a three-day week for students. A five-day week now, the week before Easter, or before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving. And then the conference days would be pre-K twelve, early release for student-led conferences and direct conferences with teachers at the elementary level. So, and that would allow us to use that week, which is, and then we have a three-day week with the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving, the day after as the recess. December somehow turned out as two weeks again. We ended up with a two-week break in December into January. Then we go latter part, we have Martin Luther King Day, followed by Regents Week, and that concludes January. February, we have a February sixth date, something that we had some conversation about. That's normally a data reset. We've also run into weather on that day a few times, so we may want to look at that and be something as you get into the school year and say, maybe we'll look at that. Right now, it's a data day. February break is the sixteenth to twentieth. In March, we have a March Superintendent's Conference Day with two early releases for conferencing on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Again, student-led conferences and spring conferences for students who may be struggling as well. So it lends itself to a great opportunity. That's followed by the April break, which is, seems very early this year. It's April thirtieth through the third. That includes Easter, which I believe is on the fifth. And then we go into May, no days except Memorial Day. And then June, and I'll be glad when we move toward more portfolios for graduate, things like that. There's a lot of Regents Days. They start the ninth of June next year. They're on the ninth, tenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and then the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. With the last day of school, the twenty- With the last day of school, the twenty-sixth, and right now, just like it is this year, it's a rating day, Superintendent's Conference Day, that's your emergency, emergency day in there.
Mark, did you receive the change for the virtual and stuff? Is that gonna include on this draft of the calendar or is that a policy? Where's that located?
It was just a suggestion that we add that in at the bottom as opposed to language that's been on there for the last forty years.
And that's on the calendar itself already?
Yeah, it's at the very bottom.
Oh, wait, oh, your, sorry.
The old language, the old language, Tennessee, we have to do.
Yeah, so the old language is on there.
It says if we take away days, how they go and the order they go. But if we're moving to virtual, we need to.
Yeah, we can adjust.
Okay, that's what I was just saying, because this is the draft right now.
Right, and it's not something that's been bargained, it's not, this has just been a practice here from what I gather. There's nothing I can find documentation-wise for April and February, other than contractually. It's, it's just been a practice for, well, before I got here. It was the same one in my previous district, it was the same phrase, actually.
But most districts include us now.
But with remote learning, I think that does change. And I think we've been spoiled by great weather over the last at least nine years. And now we need to look at, you know, how we can handle that differently and build that flexibility. Are there any questions around the twenty-five, twenty-six? You'll have that on as an agenda item on your next meeting. And that's the conclusion of the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Action four point zero one, accept financials, does somebody move it?
Move it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes six zero zero. Action five point zero one, approve committee on special education.
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes six zero zero. Action five point zero two, approve the two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five instructional calendar adjustments.
Move it, move it.
Second.
So Tim?
T and TC and TC.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes six zero zero. Action six point zero one, approve policies. Is there any discussion before we, everybody's good?
On the, was it twenty-five, twenty-one, it's the school board conferences, conventions and workshop. We just wanted, as a committee, we talked about drawing your attention to that one, that's very board-specific. This talks about conferences, conventions and workshops, it's just been, it's been a policy. I don't believe we made any adjustments to it, if I remember correctly, Tim, I don't think we had any.
If we did, it was just a word.
It might have been, yeah. Yeah, but it was more because there've been a lot of questions about expenditures and budget and things like that. There's a lot of those things in there. So what I would say is, normally we, we like to, we always say, we'll draw your attention to one if you need to take a look. This is one we think we want to feedback from you as board members.
And I think one of the things that we talked about was provided a good roadmap for planning out. So maybe not as much seven people go to one, but you have one or two go to one, one or two go to another. And then everyone brings back that information and shares it with the board and spread out the budget as well. So we're getting more out of different, you know, experiences and just making sure when there are learning opportunities, we're taking advantage of them.
Yeah, so we didn't really make any change, but I think, it was an older one, it was like two thousand sixteen. So we said, let's bring that and just make sure, because it was addressing some current issues that we had been discussing.
I guess before we go back up to action point six zero one, were there any discussion on the ones that we're voting on this evening?
No.
No, okay, somebody want to move that?
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes six zero zero. So back down to six point zero two, is there any discussion on any of the other policies that we need to read over?
No.
The AI one will be the first one that this board is seeing with artificial intelligence. So that will be your, your foundation, but I will guarantee you, you will be looking at AI policies, I'm sure, every year.
And it is in the policy, at the last line, is that we will review this on an annual basis after the board meeting. So that's just important to know, because we realize it's such an evolving area that we want to make sure we're staying current with it and following through with whatever we say we do.
Perfect. Actions for our personnel, can I have somebody possibly batch our seven point zero one to seven point one three?
Move it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, standing, passes six zero zero. Board forum, welcome back, Santina. Haven't seen you yet this year, so happy new year. How are things going? Tell us what's going on in the student world.
Not pretty much. I've been, personally, I've been busy with the school musical, a little part of it, so it's very fun. There's been, I said that, student wise, we've been able to talk about wanting to start a boys volleyball team. Um, I've gotten in contact with the people who are really interested in that and who are, I guess, leaving that whole thing. I told them to run it by Mr. Ellis first, I figured that'd be a smart idea.
Good idea.
And I told them I'd bring it up here. Um, there's, I'm not completely sure what the process was, but I figured.
Yeah, sending them to Mr. Ellis was a great, great idea, it's a part of his job. And he would be able to help them probably voice an opinion if, if it's something that comes through and, you know, even, or maybe speaking with your building principal and superintendent, bringing it to us. Yeah.
Yeah, I think you were probably a good place to bring help.
Yeah, does, does it seem to have a lot of interest? You have a lot of?
Very, very big. Goodness, kids want it. I'm fifty.
Oh, wow.
I wasn't expecting that number.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a very long list, double-sided list of kids who want us to have boys volleyball. And there's been, this isn't the first year that kids have been talking about this. I know this was a huge thing last year as well, kids really wanted a boys volleyball team.
Okay.
And I figured it should be brought up somewhere, you know.
Yeah, definitely, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Other than that, not much is happening this year, so.
Well, you guys have had a lot of snow days, so, you know.
Yeah, it's always.
Right? Can help the, the parents and the grandparents dig out, you know, what to do on your snow days.
My car was buried yesterday, so.
Oh, I bet, I bet. Mr. Randall, welcome back.
Oh, thank you. I'd rather be somewhere else. Too cold here.
Somewhere south of the Florida Georgia line.
I want to thank everyone for their presentations. Thank you, Kate, for your, the answers to your questions. I think everything's going well.
Except for the snow.
Five days, five days isn't that bad. My senior year, I think we had nine or eleven. So that was one we had to make up a lot of.
Do remote learning?
Nobody walked up to school, I filled both ways and it snowed.
Stone tablet.
Yeah, you're stone tablets.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. But other than that, hopefully we don't have any more.
Mrs. Hutchinson?
No, just thank you, everybody, for the presentations. Thank you for bringing up the boys volleyball, it's interesting to see, you know, what kind of turnout and how much student interest we get in that. I've heard that Ben, you know, kicked around a few times, actually. So it would be great to see, you know, like when the girls wrestling club came and we had a huge showing and the interest to see what that is. Thank you, Mr. Manville and Mr. Severs for that presentation. I'm really excited to see that approval process and that class get taken off. I think it just has a lot of potential to lead to a lot of different areas and a lot of different collaboration. And that is it, thank you so much.
Mr. Connors?
I think I have to agree with a lot of my board members so far. I think things seem to be moving forward, I think we just need to make sure we're staying on top. I think one of the biggest things is always communication, making sure what's said in here makes it out there and the people are aware of what's going on, what we're working with, what we're waiting on until we can make a final decision. But we are moving forward with these processes and so that you're aware of that and the numbers and why things are the way they are, especially the things we might not have the control in, but we have to implement based off the information we're given. I'd also like to thank all the people who are always contributing and giving to our Fulton City School District community. I feel like, you know, everywhere we turn around, you know, it's a donation here, something here, maybe something that's not even, you know, publicly reported. And I just thank everyone who's involved in helping make our district a success because it does take a village and thankfully our community tends to be a strong one supporting each other.
Thank you. Ms. Mayville?
Um, congratulations to our girls bowling team. Great achievement. And good luck to all of our teams going into sectionals. I'm looking forward to Cinderella, that'll be great. The, the presentations that were given tonight by Mr. Severs and Mr. Manville, I just, I mean, so many things go into that. We often have to meet monthly, I know in Phoenix we do, for, you know, professional learning communities and we're collaborating. We lead by example as educators, so the kids seeing us collaborate, you know, we're role models and they see that happening and that is just going to benefit them. And working together, collaborating, you know, you're going to be making better educational choices, you're going to be making better life choices. So I just, I think we're going in the right direction with that. Thank you for making the budget less miserable and, you know, more, I, I understood it so much better. So dummying down the budget for me was just really great, so thank you for that. That's it for me.
Ms. Prowl?
I have to agree with what everybody's saying. I love the foundations of power and sustainability because we are, it seems like over the years we are lacking a lot in science and nothing in my mind beats hands-on. And I, I love that. And volleyball, I actually didn't, wasn't aware that there was no longer a boys volleyball team, so.
We used to have one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bad one, Mr. Randall.
But they were never in school since this point.
You had to flip rates because the ball was made out of a rock.
Way back then. Anything else you'd like to add to this, Tom?
Um, no, I, I, I want to thank Kate too, because it, it, my, 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 I start rolling around sometimes, but you may get a laugh.
Thank you. This is your first budget season, right?
Yeah, first everything.
So it's the hardest. Well, I definitely agree with what my colleagues have said tonight. I also want to throw a huge shout-out to your custodial staff and all of those who are out there in this horrendous weather, making sure that the facilities are open and ready for when we can come to school. And I know they're putting in countless hours out there, keeping all of the buildings safe. And I do appreciate that. And I know I tell you all the time that you have a team, but I do appreciate that you are also out there sometimes driving around with your four AM club, your winter four AM club, making sure that areas are, are safe. And I know that, you know, it's not something you take lightly. You called me on a few occasions, really, you know, perplexed on should we, shouldn't we? Very worried about if it's going to interfere with when the kids are actually on the bus dismissing or arriving to school. So thank you so much for all of your, I'm gonna call them the four AM club because you guys are up so early.
They're amazing, thank you for acknowledging them, that means a lot to them.
I mean, it, it's just been a winter that we haven't had in a long time. I personally haven't missed it, so I can't imagine the, the people who are, are taking care of our facilities out there in it all the time. So really do appreciate that. With that said, second public forum, is there anybody who would like to speak with us this evening? Okay, we will be moving into an executive session, so if I can have somebody move that.
Move it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, passes six zero zero. Thank you so much for joining us, for those of you at home and for those of you here, we will be back out shortly.
Somebody move action nine point zero one to adjourn the meeting?
Move it.
Second. I'm taken, I'm taken John, she was, she was there. All right. It is eighteen.
Fourteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, passes six zero zero. Good evening.
Goodbye.
Good night.
Good night.
And stay warm people.